I'd like to call this meeting an order. Could you please stand and salute the flag with me, please?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we are pulling item 2.3, item 5.3, and item 6.6. Oh, sorry. Sorry, and one more. Item number 6.5 will need to move up to be right above 6.1. Oh, sorry, it's not 2.3, it's 2.4. So pulling 2.4, 5.3, 6.6, and then moving 6.5 to be above 6.1.
Okay. I think I got it. Okay, do we have council's approval of the agenda with the changes?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Number one, presentation of the Let Freedom Ring Celebration Video. Marissa?
Thank you. So in just a second, Larry's gonna have that up on the screen. Since this was the first Let Freedom Ring Celebration that we hope to have annually, we wanted to show the community and the council what a success the event was. It does require funding every year of about $25,000, give or take, from the city to have the fireworks show. So we do have a video that I believe is right around five minutes that we'd like to show.
Rejoice, it's Independence Day. You cannot overdo the red, white, and blue. And this evening, watch those same colors explode in gapping bursts and spray and arches. Beneath that same moon were a pair of patriots planted our American flag. Celebrate this great nation's independence as we enjoy food, cornhole games. There is more than a million and one ways to celebrate independence and its freedom. Especially this year, the Freedom Let Freedom Ring loud and clear.
Come on out to complete the fireworks show. It doesn't smell, I know it's hot, but that's alright.
Pick up trash on your way out so that way we can continue to use it.
Thank you.
Did you like the fireworks?
Thank you all who serve in the military, law enforcement, and firemen. Thank you all. Be sure to tell them too if you see them.
Hey, Ron, you're muted? You're muted?
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to number two, presentation of Fresno County Rental's Assistant Program by Leonardo Magnello, sorry about that, of Westside Family Preservations and Services. I'm sorry about your last name.
Alright, so good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for allowing me to participate on today's city council meeting. So as was just mentioned, it is Fresno County's Emergency Rental Assistance Program. So we do serve more than a few cities, so I'll start with that. So the cities we do serve is Kalinka, Huron, Mendota, Helm, Five Points, Three Rocks, Cantua Creek, Fireball, San Joaquin, and Tranquility. So another, I'll move on now. So how to apply? So there are a few ways as well to apply. You can apply online, through mail, and directly by, so email, mail, and online. So a little bit about the program. The program is a rental relief program due to COVID-19. It is funded by the county. As of now, we are assisting tenants and landlords with 100% of arrears. Now the current month of August, and also September if they pass the qualification process. So what documents are required from tenants and landlords? I'll go ahead and start off with the landlords. So if you're a landlord and you're renting a property and you have not gotten paid due to the hardship of the tenant. So the documents that we do request are a IRS W-9, a California 590. And to make it easier and faster, we do request a rental lease agreement that shows basically when the tenant started renting, and also, if possible, documentation showing how many months the tenant is behind. So that will help us speed up the process in order to get them the help they need. So I'll move on now to the tenants. So as a tenant, if you were affected by COVID-19, not necessarily, hey, I got COVID, but if you're affected financially, if you had a loss of income, loss of hours, if you are a parent and you had to be home for online learning, those are some qualifications that will allow you to pretty much apply for the program. What documents are required from tenants? So again, a rental lease agreement, income, any, so any income, it could be food stamps, regular gross income, if they receive RSDI, SDI, disability, we will account for all income as income. So there is three stages of the application process. So one is application. My staff actually either goes door to door, they can come to the office, and we will assist them throughout the whole process to complete that application. Second part is approval. So approval, if it goes, RH Community Builders, which is who we're contracted with, will go through the tenant's applications and approve. If it is approved, then it goes to the next stage, which is getting them paid. So who gets paid? So if the landlord is the one who needs the rent paid, the landlord gets paid directly. If the landlord chooses not to participate, then we will go directly through the tenant, and the tenant will receive the paycheck. Although, that's a, what if the tenant doesn't provide the paycheck, right? So they do have 10 to 15 days to provide that paycheck to that landlord. So everything is under penalty of perjury, so it is, there is, you know, there's consequence if that is not turned in. So another. And then as far as what we do to spread this information out in the community, we do do door to door. We do events. So, so far, we've participated in events all throughout the cities we we provide the assistance to. Now we have designated hours. So for example, on Tuesdays, in our Kalinka office, we are there from 8 to 12. In our Huron office, we are there from 1 to 5. And in our Kerman office, we are there from 1 to 5. So we're doing everything we can to spread the word of the program. It does end in December. So that's why we're trying to get the most information out as soon as possible. So I'll go ahead and leave this out for any questions, if you guys have any questions.
Yeah, I got a quick question. So if this is all approved and everything for the tenant or the landlord, what's the cost to them?
So as a landlord, you'll basically receive that IRS W-9 at the end of the year, that it was income. So initially, if your tenant paid the rent, you would have still received the income. As a tenant, it won't count against them. It's not gonna count as income. So it is just the same as a...
Even if the check is written to the tenant, it doesn't count as income?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes. And then if it is written to the landlord, then it would count as income. So that's the only difference. Any other questions?
Is there a website?
Yes. So the website, and with all the information I just provided, is fresnorentalhelp.com.
Fresnorental.com?
Fresnorentalhelp.com.
I have a question.
Yes.
Tenants who aren't paying their rent are probably not paying their utilities either. Can they also apply for help with utilities?
Yes. So we actually were approved, I believe, the end of last month for utilities as well, and it is 100% as well. And now they have the option of saying, hey, you know, I do owe all this rent for these previous months. I may need the assistance up to September. We can actually assist them all the way up to September.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. It sounds like a great program.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for, again, for allowing me to participate on today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Go next. We'll go to item number three, introduction of Cause Real Estate and Altima Real Estate Advisors Incorporated. Sorry about that, guys.
Totally okay.
Only okay.
Mayor, council members, City Manager Trejo, thank you for inviting us here this evening, as well as the community here to hear this.
Introduce yourself.
Frank Kazlowski, Cas Real Estate.
And I'm, yep, and I'm Dean Sparts. So we are under contract on the 25 West Polk Street, former Kmart building. And we are working with a national clothing retailer, a national hardware and agricultural retailer, as well as a grocer. Coupled with that, there are two pads, and we're in touch with a national bank, a coffee, a national coffee chain that's a drive-through, you probably can guess who it might be, along with several other tenants. And we're introducing the project tonight. We've been in touch with the city manager about it over the past several weeks, and, you know, working through various incentives related mostly to the grocer. The grocer is a crucial component of the shopping center. We've, we've heard that the city may not be as inclined to want, you know, an additional grocer here. But if other tenants, like a national clothing retailer, a national hardware and agricultural retailer, and another drive-through coffee, and a pad tenant, if those tenants are desired, the grocer is simply crucial to getting, you know, those other tenants. So we presented various, you know, information to Marissa so far, and, you know, the I guess, you know, in the coming weeks, we'll provide more information, and we'd like to put a sales tax incentive agreement on the agenda to discuss because we feel that that would be extraordinarily helpful in attracting a grocer. In addition to sales tax incentives, we're also working with the county on new market tax credits. It is an extraordinarily heavy lift to get a grocer here and to get national retailers here. But we are putting in the heavy work. In fact, today, we were meeting there with the seller of that building, who you guys may, may know, grocery store owner in the area, along with his broker, and going through, talking over timelines and all that we have to go through to really attract a tenant. But the good news is, we have the time, and we're working through it, and it's, it's, we're very passionate about bringing this to the community, and we've been told that the community would be very welcoming to it. And we're just here to walk, you know, to introduce it to everyone, and, you know, here to answer any questions about it, and, you know, appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Do you have a timeline set up yet, or?
You know, it's real estate development, dealing with tenants, so everyone knows that that timeline is, is ambiguous. We would, we would like to be closed and proceeding, as in building out the, the building by January. Doubtful that it happens before. It could happen after, but that's what we're attempting to do. That's we're exhausting all effort to make January when we commence. And you would have these retail, if that happened, you'd likely have these retail stores open by Q3 or Q4 of, of next year.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, get started. Thank you very much, and any updates, feel free to come to, and talk to the council, or talk to our lady from the newspaper, too. Okay, well, thank you guys very much. That's exciting news. Okay, we'll go to item number five, presentations of standard of cover, overview, and recommendations. Chief?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. What I have for you is a brief overview with recommendations from the standards of cover that was performed by AP Triton and Associates. They were unfortunately unable to be here this evening, so they sent me their presentation, and I said I would share it with them. As you know, about a month ago or so, I gave you guys all a copy of the final report. And rather than you going through 168 pages of data, he wanted to kind of give you a brief overview and description of what we discovered with our report. Hopefully. There we go. Okay, so the report went over, these are the items that the report, the report went over. Description of community served, services provided, community expectations and performance goals, the community risk assessment, critical tasking and alarm assignments, kind of our system performance, and then the overall evaluation, conclusion, and recommendations based off what they discovered. So this report was a thorough review and assessment of our community risk, emergency response capabilities of the fire department, our apparatus and facilities, and analysis of the level of service currently provided to the community. It identified issues that could, are possibly impeding our performance right now, and then recommendations for service delivery. This document is not a mandate requiring to do any of these things, or to expend any money on new fire department resources. This is just a analysis of what was discovered during the evaluation. Larry, you might have to, there you go. So this is kind of the historic response workload. This is nothing new. This is pretty much standard across the nation. EMS calls are far more exceed fire calls. In 2020, we were 85% fire, 3% hazard, 6% fire alarm calls, and 6% fires. To date, our data in 2021 is actually 90/10. So we're actually higher than 2020 right now. How we base system performance, people, tools, time equals effectiveness. So how we train our people, the apparatus and equipment that we have, and the condition that it's in, time is duration between event start and when we get there, when we arrive. And then the effectiveness is how we mitigate the incident and how quickly we mitigate that incident. So these are phases of emergency events. We focus on these. Contact with emergency dispatch center, dispatch incident processing, response crew notification, our turnout time, and our travel time. These are the things that we can control. As you can see here, this is basically from a fire from incipient stage to growth, and how many, how many minutes until it takes to cause a flashover, which is a total room ignition. And the things that we can control, unit dispatch, turnout, response time, and how we get there and set up is all dictated by how fast we can get out of the facility. So this is response performance standard goals, and this is an NFPA standard throughout the country. Call processing time should be within 60 seconds 90% of the time. Turnout time should be 60 seconds 90% of the time. First unit arrival is 3 minutes 90% of the time. Unit total response time is 5 minutes, and full effective response force, that means everybody on scene from our agency, in addition to our auto aid response, is within 9 minutes 90% of the time. So here's what they found. Call processing, like I said, it should be 60 seconds. We are well over. So they discovered a deficiency. So it's something we're going to address with our call centers and find out why this is happening. But this is why we did this report, so we can find things like this. So we are, it's taking longer for the dispatch center to receive the call and get it to us than it should. It should be at 90 seconds, and you can see we're well over that. This is our turnout time, and this is from the time the, the station gets the alarm until our guys are in the apparatus and moving in route to the incident. We should be at 90 seconds, and you can see we are well over that as well. This was addressed immediately as I got this report, and I'm already seeing improvements. So the guys are taking notice and already making changes, but this is another deficiency that they found that we need to address. So this is our travel time. As you can see, it's a map of our response area. 4 minutes or less is pretty much city limits, so we're meeting that. We are meeting that goal 90% of the time. Four minutes or less is pretty much city limits, so we're meeting that. We are meeting that goal 90% of the time within our city limits. As we get further out, you can see the four-minute to eight-minute mark, the eight-minute to 10-minute mark, and more than 10. That's how, we're not meeting those times, and that's, that's typical. That's not really an issue to me. My concern is meeting the times within the city jurisdiction. But this map can help us plan for the future if we start looking at additional stations to say, hey, we need to put a, a station on the east side, because we're not meeting our times. So our response performance is also determined effective response force, and that is the number of personnel and apparatus required to be present at scene of emergency to perform the critical tasks without unnecessary loss of life. For us, nine minutes, 20 seconds, we should have 16 firefighters on scene, and that includes our department, as well as our auto aid engines of Pleasant Valley Prison, and Fresno County Fire Protection District out of Huron and Harris Ranch. So Huron, so during their review, one of the things that came up that they discussed with me immediately was, we are not meeting our obligation in Huron, which we already knew, something I was aware of day one. And so based on their analysis, they determined that Kalanga units are rarely available to respond to requests for service in this area. As a result, American ambulance is taking those calls, which in turn is taking our revenue. So that is one thing that they discovered during this proposal or this report. As you can see, 652 calls last year, and we only responded to 90 of them, and the majority of those were returning to headquarters from Fresno, Hanford, or Visalia hospitals, and coming back into town. These were not responding from the station. These were on the way back in the majority of the time. But as you can see, in the last three years, we've missed 1,1,857 calls in the city of Huron, 652 last year alone. So their recommendations. So they have short-term recommendations, medium-term recommendations, and long-term recommendations. Short-term recommendations are things that we should try to address within the next one to two years. We need to develop a proactive wildland urban interface educational program. We don't have a our risk is low for wildland fires, but we still do have weed abatement, and we still do have vegetation around the area. So this is one of the assignments that the new division chief is going to be assigned to, is to create a wildland urban interface educational program for the community. This is probably going to be priority number one for the division chief, is to develop a comprehensive fire and life safety commercial inspection program. That's one of the primary reasons was to hire the division chief prevention for this thing. And, and focusing on the state mandated stuff. So there's state mandated inspections we have to do every year, and those are schools, hospitals, apartment complexes, hotels, motels, et cetera. And that's something that's been lacking over the past five to 10 years. When I went over the slide with the, the call data with the dispatch centers, this is something that we need to develop a closer relationship with the dispatch center and make them understand the importance of performance measuring times and improve upon that. I've already discussed this with the battalion chief of the ECC, and we're working towards that. I, I already made mention that we are attempting to reduce the turnout time interval. We were well over the 90 seconds, and that's already being addressed as well. So it, a lot of these things that they discovered, we're already addressing, and that validates the, the decisions that we're making with this report. Consider placing an ambulance in Huron. Like I said, it's no secret, we need to do something. In, in the next coming weeks, months, I will be coming back to you with a plan to staff Huron while keeping our coverage in Kalanga where it's at. So we don't reduce, we don't decrease our service to the community, but we can also provide additional community services to Huron. So I will be coming back to you guys with that. I have a, I have a plan in place that I'll go over. Evaluate the adoption of cost recovery fees. Looking at our master fee schedule for prior fire prevention fees, we, we don't have nearly as much as we possibly could have. A lot of cities have cost recovery fees, so I'm going to be looking into that as well, and look for additional means of revenue. Our midterm recommendations are things that we should try to accomplish within the next two to three years. Consider adding staffing to stabilize scheduling and enhance crew safety. We all know that overtime is an issue in any department, and attacking the the career staff to enhance that is an option, and, and it's something I'm going to be looking at. Adding additional firefighter per shift to help with the scheduling and the overtime. Converting EMS units to non-safety employees, this is what we're doing with our EMS division, that we just hired the non-safety. But the recommendation is to expand upon that. So make another ambulance non-safety, and eventually the third ambulance non-safety down the road. And what this is doing is this is increasing our fire protection coverage without adding firefighters. So if I take firefighters off the ambulance and place them on the fire engine with, and replace them with the non-safety, I just increased our fire suppression, and I didn't have to hire anyone. And so that's something that we're going to look at as well. And then place an ambulance in Huron, this is going to be increasing the revenue, and that revenue could possibly pay for the additional firefighters. Develop a comprehensive pre-incident planning program. This is another assignment the division chief will have. We're going to go over pre-incident planning, and we have already budgeted software to make this happen once that person is selected and starts. Acquire a new ladder truck. Thanks to all of you. We already, we can check this one off the list. This is one of their things. They said it was 35 years old. You guys need to replace your truck. And so prior to the completion of this report, we already, we already did that, so I want to thank you for that. So long-term recommendations are things that we're looking at five, 10, 15, 20 years down the line. If we don't grow as a city, rather than recommending a second station, the recommendation is to approve this, and pro the station that we have. I will tell you that I budgeted a kitchen remodel and some upstairs remodel within this current budget that we have, so that's going to be addressed this year. But long-term, we need to look at renovating the station if we don't have the opportunity to expand and have a second station. And, and remember, these are five, 10, 15, 20-year goals. And then this is the whole point of the report. When I started, my goal was to develop a five-year strategic plan, but I wanted to develop it, develop that strategic plan based on, based on facts and data, and that's what this report did. Instead of going one direction that I think we should, I wanted to get a report to make sure we weren't going another direction that we should be going in. And the great thing about this report is it has validated all of the decisions that we are currently making and the vision that I have for the department for, into the future. So first of all, I just want to thank all of you. A project of this magnitude would not be accomplished without everyone's help, from city staff to council to the community. I just want to thank everyone for being involved and helping out with this report. Like I said, you do have a copy of the report. If you have any questions specific to that, I don't have the report in front of me, but if you have any questions regarding the presentation, I'll be happy to answer them now.
Any questions?
Just so people know, when are we getting that ladder truck?
The ladder truck is still on, on pace to be here October, November. Myself and one of the captains are looking at going out at the end of this month to do the final inspection. And then once the final inspection is done, they will paint the truck our engine colors, and then call us back out to pick it up and drive it home.
And how about the other truck?
The other truck was ordered a couple of weeks ago, and it's a 14 to 16-month build time. But it has been ordered, and so we're moving along. In fact, they assigned a VIN number to it yesterday.
Oh, great. Any other questions?
How quick do they want the ambulance in Huron? Or how quick can we get?
Well, tomorrow. I will say that that is one of my top priorities, and we are going to be moving on it fast, but I want to make sure we do it right this time. I understand there were some issues in the past, and I don't want those to happen again, and so we're not going to rush it. But we're going to have a strategic plan to place an ambulance in Huron while still providing coverage for the community of Kalanga.
Yeah, I mentioned there's a, there's a fourth one already ready. Was there, was there a third one or a fourth one?
We have three ambulances right now. I have received word from the city of Huron that they have secured money to build us an ambulance station and purchase us an ambulance. And that, that, that is ours. They are, they're, they do, they assured me they do not want to get into the ambulance business, and they know that it's our area, so they will not try to contract with American ambulance. It is for the Kalanga Fire Department.
And that's coming back next meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
So I got a lot of questions.
It will, it will be next meeting or the one after. So it will be, it will be soon. I'm, I'm trying to move forward with Huron as quick as we can.
Any other questions? Thanks, chief.
Actually, actually, is there a volunteer program that you guys have in mind? Like back in the day when they used to have that volunteer firefighter?
Right. So I have a firefighter right now who is talking with Kalanga High School about starting an ROP program there. And then the ROP program will go to EMT school at West Hills College. And then those people will come to our department as reserve firefighters, and then hopefully transition to non-safety, and then to permanent firefighter. So we have a path for kids in high school to become firefighters right when they start high school, all the way up until they can get a full-time career.
Nice, nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, next, we'll go to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use a microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and report. Citizens' comments will be timed by the city clerk. She will alert you when you have 10 seconds remaining. If you continue speaking, you will be asked to end your public comment at the end of the three-minute mark. Do we have anybody? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I'm so used to the Zoom. And so anybody in the audience like to? Okay, okay, Scott got his hand up first, so.
Council members, I'd like to, Scott Netherton, 424 College Avenue. I'd like to start out by commending Marissa and entire city staff for Tuesday's event. It was terrific turnout. And all I've heard is good things about it, and I can't imagine the effort they put into that, coordinating the supplies, getting the vendors here and everything, and I just think they deserve a lot of recognition. I mean, all the way down to the, the employees that were out setting up tables and chairs and directing everybody where to go. It was very well done. Thank you. As most of you probably know, I'm, have been given the opportunity to be the new director for the Kalanga Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm very excited to get started in that. And I just want you to know that I look forward to working with the city and getting things on track and back to where, you know, got big shoes to follow. We've had a lot of really good directors in the past, and I will do my best to live up to their expectation. I do also want to let you know, we have a couple of things that we are planning coming up. We are planning a September 11th. Not celebration, obviously, but a, an event to recognize our first responders, firefighters. It'll be held at Memorial Park. Mr. Wisnewski, who raises and lowers the garrison flag, him and I will be working on putting together. It's very preliminary yet. We're not certain what we want to do, but I just want to let you guys know that there will be something going on for that. Also, this Saturday at RC Baker Museum, a gentleman's coming to town, Gary Gragnani. He's an author, historian. He wrote a book called A Talk on Joaquin Marietta. He'll be getting there Saturday at 11:00 a.m. to discuss the book, answer questions, and they will have some artifacts, an old hat, and a dagger, and some other things from that era that's being loaned from another museum. So if anybody can be there, it should be really interesting. I went through there the other day for the, I got, I'm not going to lie, the first time since I was in elementary school, and I had no idea. Couldn't even, didn't even remember half of what they had there. So if you get a chance, it'd be nice to see some people there, but again, it's an honor to be able to serve in the community, and if there's anything I can do, please reach out anytime. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Mary?
Mary Jones, District One. I want to echo a little bit of what Scott said. I heard nothing but good things about Tuesday night. And then actually, it rolled back into the Let Freedom Ring thing, and people have just been saying so many nice things about what the city has done lately. It kind of balances out just a little bit about the water. We've had three things. That was one, then the water. I don't, I don't know how complicated it would be to allow residents to see the tier markings, like the PG and E says you use this much at this rate and this much of that rate. I don't know if that's a simple thing that, that your software could be tweaked to demonstrate, but it would make some people happier. I don't really care that much, but some people have mentioned it to me. The third thing is, and I don't know, maybe everybody already knows this, but West Hills Medical Group was bought by Advanced American Management Group. And the staff from West Hills Medical Group will be covering both their group and the Rural Health Clinic, which is supposed to open on Monday with hours from eight to five. So that's kind of a big deal. So I didn't know if you knew that or not, so.
Are they going to have state, separate buildings still, or?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to have separate?
They're keeping both sides for now. Dr. Griffin has a contract to work for them for five years. And then he'll probably retire after that, but yeah. I mean, that was just me. That was not an intelligence statement, so don't.
You're talking about the second building, the old Adventist building, correct?
No.
No?
It will be the, his office, Dr., the medical practice is on the corner of Elm and Fifth. The other building where the Rural Health Clinic was is at the pavilion, the medical pavilion at the hospital site. So that will be reopened. So that's kind of exciting.
That's great.
And he'll be at both places.
Thank you, Mary. Vosberg?
Mayor, Honorable Counsel Nathan Vosberg, District Three. First off, what an amazing fireworks show. I'm jealous. I couldn't, I wasn't here. I couldn't be here. And I'm even more jealous because when I was on council, it was always about cutting things, and you guys are now having the benefit of adding things back, which is super cool, and I appreciate you guys doing that, and I would suggest more things for the community. The splash pad not getting that on time was like a real blow. It's when we see Hanford and other places having them that are, they're recycling the water, and they're telling me they can use them like that, so I don't know what the situation really was, but please move on, more stuff like that. But I think you guys are doing a great job on, on this particular, it was, it was a great thing. And I was really impressed by Mr., how do I say your? Dupuy. I was very impressed, and I would, I would actually love to see all the rest of the departments do a five-year and 10-year plan as well, because we don't know where our money's going to be in that amount of time, and looking at PERS, looking at all of your situations that all rise, and then the money you guys are spending right now, which is a lot, you just want to make sure that you can be in line with that come time where if the tax expires, or and people don't, you know, want that, or you lose revenue from cannabis, or, or whatnot, it looks like you guys are doing pretty well. And so that's pretty awesome, and I want to thank all you guys for that. I did want to talk, just mentioned on 5.8, the home, the transient occupancy. I'm just, I don't know, I read it a little bit. I just wanted to make sure that you take into consideration that home occupations, people, make sure you put a little thing in there that says we're exempt from this, because for businesses, you know, we do live at our place where we're at, and the wording should not include us, because we aren't the ones I think you guys are going after in that text. And then just lastly, on a more interesting note, on the last meeting, on the first, I, I listened in, I wasn't able to come, but I listened in, and I heard some information from a public official that was speaking that was not true, and it was slanderous. And I'm unhappy that that, that that was put out there, and so I would ask that that would stop. No one that's currently here. And I also wanted to thank the mayor. You did a great job in handling that meeting when tempers were going back and forth on that issue, and so mayor pro tem, and so I appreciate that. And you know what? You guys are on a good track. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nathan. Is there anybody else? Okay, well, thank you. Did we have any written notifications?
We have received one written communication for public comment from Greg Cody. Written comments will be included in the minutes, and they have been distributed to the council, but they will not be read.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll go to consent calendar. We have 18. Number one is approval of the minutes of the July 1st, 2021. Number two is a check register from 61 to 630, 21. Number three is authorize city manager to enter into a multiple-year contract with Clear Government Incorporated for budget and transparency software.
I just want to specify, sorry, number three that you just read is the one that was pulled.
Oh, okay, I thought the, I'm sorry. I thought we would, we switched them without four was pulled. Okay. So number four, okay, would be number three now, approve the proposed, proposed received, proposal received from Enterprise for the fleet management program and authorize the city manager to execute the related agreements. Number five, adopt resolution number 4039 regarding certification and claims for collections of Measure C funds for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, and authorize a financial service director to sign the local transportation pass through revenue certificates and claim forms. Number six, adopt resolution number 4041. Adventorium 2021, 22 property taxes for public safety employees for the city of Kalinga. Number seven, adopt resolution 4042 placing a moratorium on swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, decorated fountains, or water features effectively immediately until the city proclaims the water conservation emergency to be over. Number eight, regarding, information regarding requiring businesses to pay transient occupancy tax for residing occupants within the city. Number nine, receive report and approve a regulatory permit to Greenhaven Farms for commercial cannabis indoor cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution, distribution microbusiness. Number 10, consider a bid award for paving various dirt alleys. Number 11, authorize assistant city manager to amend the contract with taco, tango lighting to proceed with street lighting audit and acquisition. Number 12, approve the funding and utilization of Tyler Enterprise Asset Management, EAM, as an asset management program. Number 13, authorize city manager to negotiate a revive contract for animal control with Give Me Love. Number 14, counsel advisement of replacement of AC unit at the police department. Number 15, authorize city manager to draft and implement a public, a police recruit job description and pay scale pursuant to the police department recruitment program. Number 16, accept Homeland Security grant for fiscal year 21, 22. Seventeen, declare old body worn cameras and digital patrol cameras as surplus and authorize disposal. Number 18, approve agreement with Policy Manual Services from Expo LLC. Number 19, Police Department Second Quarter Report 2021. Is there anything you guys would like to pull?
Four, seven, 12, and 13, please.
Four, seven, 12, and 13? Okay, any other ones? Any other ones? Okay, we'll go to number four, approve the proposed approve the proposal received from Enterprises for Fleet Management Program and authorize the city manager to execute the related agreement. What would you like to know?
So I like the idea. I just want to make sure that every vehicle is approved by council instead of strictly the city manager. So if the city decides that they want to get a new vehicle, that it has to come to council to be approved.
Oh, each vehicle does?
Yeah.
What does everybody else think about that?
Yeah, I mean, like, so I believe originally they had seventeen, listed seventeen vehicles that they said the city needed. I would like to see each vehicle come before the council and have council approval of those seventeen vehicles before we actually approve it.
They actually already do, don't they?
I believe that from a discussion that we had this week, what he would like to see is the actual vehicle itself, because the report that's attached doesn't include that. So like for, just as an example, for the two city admin vehicles we have, we had looked into Ford Fusion hybrids. But that's not referenced here. So it's my understanding that his goal is when we find cars that we would like to recommend, that we bring them to council so that council has the final say on what vehicles are utilized under the program.
Yes, my understanding was the council approved any, any thing we bought like that.
So this agreement would allow me to select the vehicles as part of the program. And so what he's asking is for them to come back to the council. So to, you would approve this, but he wants it approved with the understanding that each vehicle will come back to council.
Okay. How would we put that into the, then? Would we write it like that, or how would, if we, if we agree to it?
He could make the motion to approve it with the condition that the vehicles will become, will come back to council for consideration before they're finalized.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion, a second, to add, to add to this proposal. Right, right, okay. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I'll go ahead and vote aye. Okay, number seven. Adopt resolution 4042 placing a moratorium on swimming pool, spas, hot tubs, decorated fountains, and/or water features effectively immediately and until the city proclaims the water conservation emergency to be over. Go ahead.
Again, I agree with Councilman Horn. I think this is a good idea. There is one thing I'd like to add to that, and that is that I did get a call from somebody in Kalinga. And she said that she is in the middle of building a pool, but the pool company has agreed to bring in water from outside the city's source. So if we could, what's that? Yeah, so if we could approve this, but say it's okay as long as we get on like letterhead from the company that says they will not use Kalinga City water to bring water in to fill their pools.
Well, on my, my, my deal on this whole thing is if she's already been approved for a pool, then she can fill it.
Right.
We're supposed to.
Wasn't she? She would be okay.
Just no new permit.
But she's adding to this. I mean, she doesn't have to do that.
No, but it would be nice if people did want to add a pool. And I mean, the reason why we're doing this is so we do not use city water. Well, if we have a way around using city water, then why not? Why are we gonna stop them?
Could we, to do this, could we add on to this with the city manager's discretion that if they bring in their own water, they could build a pool? I mean, would that be okay? That way it wouldn't have to come to the council, and they wouldn't have to wait on us.
That, that's how, so currently, the way it is, is any pool permits already on file, they can fill with city water. The item on here, it was for a pool and spa and everything else that's listed, moratorium, so that no new permits would be issued. And so I think that you are all wanting the same thing. You're just saying it different ways, which is that we will still issue pool permits if they will provide a letter stating that they will fill the pool some other way than using city water.
Does that agree to everybody? Okay, can we put that into that?
Yeah, so someone will make that motion. Oh, sorry.
I agree with it, but this seems like a hard pill to guarantee, because I give you a paper with a letterhead, doesn't mean that how would you know that I didn't use city water after it was done?
We could see it on their usage.
After? It's filled?
We, we would know that they, well, I mean, we would see their usage, and they, if they exceeded their water usage for the month, then they would be paying the penalty water fee.
But they would still get their pool.
That's correct.
That, that's the thing, yeah. I can give you a letterhead that says I can fly, but that doesn't mean I can fly. Because at the end of the day, when my pool is filled, it's filled. And I'll go and pay whatever I gotta pay for it, and I'm, I'm happy with that. So you, you're kind of opening the door a little bit wider than I thought we did. We didn't want to open that door. If you have one on file now, go with it. Your permit's good. We're not gonna say stop. But anything new, I, I think still should be put to the back burner, because we can't even tell people to stop watering their yards already, because there's still water in their yard. So how are we gonna say you're not gonna fill up a pool? Okay, you're not. I mean, I just think that, that's.
Right now, people are, we ask them to, to cut back on their water. A lot of people are, a lot of people aren't. We have, we have fines out there for them if they do. I mean, my water bill was a lot higher than I've ever paid in my life this month. And I, I'm paying it. But I've even, I, you go over and see my lawn right now, it's brown. And I'm still trying to cut back. So I'm, I'm saying they're gonna use the water. They're gonna try to cut back, just like I tried to cut back, but they're still gonna pay their bills. So. So I, I think we ought to give them, if they, they want to pull, 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 uh, put a pool in. And transparency is everything too, just like you guys said. We gotta trust their, they trust us. We gotta trust them.
Everything was going good until Ray had to talk. What if we, is there any way that we could send John out there to inspect and make sure that? Sure that the water is actually coming from a truck and not a city source?
So we.
He's got to sign off on the actual distribution of water into the pool.
They could have to have a permit.
So we could, the problem would be that, like, if they turn their hose on and put it in at night, then no one's gonna know until it's already filled.
And if the gentleman does say I'm gonna bring water and doesn't, do you let that pool just sit dry? You know, you know what's gonna happen to it? Exactly. So once it's done, it has to be filled. Whether it's Kalinga water, his water, it doesn't matter. So why open that door when he knows at the end of the day, when that is full, I need water. You're gonna give me water. That's what I'm.
So I got a quick question. What are our numbers from last month compared to June's? Did it go down?
We're providing a comprehensive update. Not comprehensive, but the short answer is no. We're higher than we were in 2020 for the same month.
Exactly.
But what was, what was the, what was the difference between June and July?
It was higher in July. Usage?
Yeah.
It was higher.
Wow.
We're still in the hole. We started in the hole, and we're getting deeper in the hole.
So Ray has a reasonable request. I understand where he's coming from. Maybe I even agree with it. We're only doing this for a certain amount of months. Is that correct? Originally, I think you said till February. I mean, how many people are actually gonna put it in a pool during the middle of winter? So maybe we'll just go without it, and just the way it is, is fine with me.
We've already had a motion and a second, though, didn't we?
No.
Didn't we? Okay. Okay. I, I just think that if a citizen, they trust us. They put us up here, and they trust what we say. If a citizen tells us they're gonna do that, I want to put the trust into a citizen. You know, and if they tell you that they're gonna get water from outside, I believe them, and I'm gonna give them a chance.
How about, how about this? We, we asked for a letter on the company letterhead, but we levy a hefty fine if they go 12,000, 15,000 gallons above what they were the month before. Obviously, it's gonna be a 12 or 15,000 dollar, I mean, 15,000 gallon pool.
So that would have to be a separate item to come back for any type of fine. It's not gonna be that high of usage, but we could bring back an item. It's just we can't vote on a fine today.
Government thing takes forever.
Yeah, I would suggest approve what's in front of you, if you want to do that, and then we'll bring back a modification. I mean, some, some kind of requirement.
I make a motion, we just pull this object, I mean, pull this item and come back for it.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please. Pardon me? Yeah, I'm just asking for it right now.
No, reverse. Right? You made the motion, Manny seconded?
Right.
Mayor Ramsey?
Yes.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Singleton?
Aye.
Okay. Number 12. Approve the funding and utilization of Tyler Enterprise Asset Management and Asset Management Program as an asset management program.
Did you have specific questions, or did you want a basic overview?
Basic overview, please. If I understand correctly, this is a $30,000 project, or whatever you want to call it, this year plus $13,000 each additional year. Why do we need this now when we didn't have it last month, and why couldn't we have budgeted for this during the last budget round?
Thank you. So you'll hear Larry's voice up there unless he wants to come down. But he is the expert on this item, so we'll let him do a brief overview.
One moment. Okay, so basically, the answer why it wasn't last month as opposed to, you know, now, the long and short of that is that we weren't aware that this was even an option. But what this is, is, is in a asset management program, which is a methodology of looking at everything that you have and retrieving all the, the information for it, and then looking at how long this, this thing will last, how that, that thing will last. So, so, so you can actually build a future plan of how you need to spend your money and how you can best spend it effectively.
And if I can kind of add a little bit extra. One of the things that really kind of triggered this is when I originally kind of took over Public Works and Utilities, and we started, we were kind of in the middle of a rate study. And we were looking at the capital projects that need to be done at the water treatment plant, looking at our infrastructure. This was basically spearheaded by, you know, myself, Larry and our team. But we have worked with the police department and the fire department, because it does benefit all departments. But we saw the deficiencies at the water plant and the, you know, the lack of overall maintenance. Like, we're doing a lot of large-scale capital projects, especially the tank, the Derek tank, that's gonna cost maybe $3 million, if not more, to rehabilitate, because there hasn't been any maintenance done. That's a huge asset to our community. But also, all the other intricate things that are at the water plant that allows us to continue to create safe drinking water. It allows us to look at maintenance records, ma- make sure that we're maintaining these, these larger expensive assets like pumps. Making sure that we know the lifespan, so we can start planning ahead and utilize grant opportunities, because it's hard to look at a grant when you have a piece of, an asset that needs to be replaced five years ago or 10 years ago. So it makes it very challenging. What we see with the asset management, and Larry and I have been talking about this for over a year, and trying to develop a plan that would work, because it is important for us to budget. So we're not going to the council or going to the ratepayers and say, we need $7 million, where, you know, maybe 20 years ago, if we would have continued to go through this process and know the maintenance and look at other funding opportunities, we may have been able to do either twice as many projects or spend as less money on these larger, because as we know, just with roads, it costs more to reconstruct a road if you don't maintain it than if you continue to maintain it over a period of 20 years. So that's kind of the concept, and that's where this kind of, you know, came from, is looking at, we, we want to have a plan moving forward. We want to be able to come to the council and say, hey, we may spend $100,000 on maintenance at the water plant or on our. we may spend $100,000 on maintenance at the water plant or on our water infrastructure or sewer at the sewer plant. But you know what? In two years, we're going to need to spend a half million. Because assets are going to start expiring, and so we need to make sure that we're we're addressing them not five years after we should have. Let's start planning it three to five years before. So that's kind of where this is coming from. These are expensive. Um I I understand that. I know that the water and sewer and gas system will definitely take the burden of it. And we have a small percentage that come out of police and fire due to the the utilization of the system.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
On that that tank repair up there, we probably already went over it, but the tank repair up there, does that include the valves that are along that line all the way to Claremont? So they can actually control the water?
No, it's it's just.
Just the tank?
The tank. We are actually looking at doing separate projects and looking at the the valves on that transmission line.
Yeah, because I know three of them are bad.
Yes, and we already, I think we have one. Actually, I think at the next council meeting, there'll be, I think, we'll have a couple clay valve replacements on those. Um we're also looking at the bypass. So yeah, the Derek reservoir is a huge focus. We've had our kickoff meetings. We're working with the engineers. Um but that's just one of many that we're looking at. In this asset management program, when you look at you know, the staffing levels that we have, this helps a lot in terms of being able to help us with planning. So.
Yeah, this this is a shift away from reactive maintenance, which which you should know is way more expensive than preventative maintenance.
And if I can just say real quick um to put Nathan on the spot, this is sort of what he was requesting um under his citizens comment when he said that he would like to see as a citizen things that the city is able to plan, like we know that we're going to have to replace this big piece of equipment or we're going to have to change the way certain things are done. Um this asset management software would allow us to track that in order to come to the council with sort of a strategic plan of what's going to be needed at the water plant or the wastewater plant.
Yeah, like right uh right now, this all uh this stuff is all in all of our heads. So if Sean were to leave or it or if, you know, me or say like someone else left, it's gone. Like it's like you would just have, you know, notes and thoughts and then that's all gone. So this 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 is a way to if you lose your your head of uh public works or you lose, you know, whoever, the ship keeps on sailing.
So if I understand correctly, 75% are coming out of different enterprise funds and 25% are coming out of police and fire. I'm guessing the 25% that are coming out of police and fire are not budgeted, so we're going to be using some of our uh reserves, I guess. Is that correct?
Yes.
And each additional year is $13,000 and will the breakdown be the same on 75% enterprise funds, 25% police and fire?
The software can also be used in public works?
Uh it will be primarily used by public works.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it'll help with budgeting, too, especially like for inventory of all the equipment that we use. I mean, all the equipment we have, plus all of the, I mean, all the materials, everything that we keep at the yard. Waste Water Plant, Water Plant, all of that's going to be inventoried.
It's also like a work order system. So like, we can actually search for, hey, how many water leaks did we have in this area? Uh what happened on at, you know, this house three, you know, three years ago, like, so you actually have a searchable thing instead of having to filter through, you know, pieces of uh paper.
And just one additional component to this is that we have the public cost accounting that we, you know, we we adopted, council adopted probably about a year and a half ago. This is a huge component to that. That's going to allow us as public works to be able to go out and do more projects at higher valued projects. Where but but it allows us to track material costs. It allows us to track everything, personnel costs that we're going to be required by law to do in order to do projects at a larger scale than $5,000. Because that's what, you know, public contract code limits us to. Um and so it allows us, it's going to allow our guys to have a lot more experience and doing a lot bigger jobs, too. So but we need, this is something that's critical to be able to track a lot of that um a lot of those that work that's being done, too.
Are you going to have a person at each facility keeping track of that? One of the employees?
Yeah, we haven't quite. I mean, there's a big implementation process in this because we have to input everything. Um but we will develop develop our policies and procedures in terms of, you know, most likely supervisors that are in in charge of or someone that's in charge at each site, each site to make sure we're tracking inventory and making sure.
Would you oversee all of it in the end?
I would oversee everything, yes.
So this first year just starts at 30,000. It's not 30,000 plus 13,000?
I don't know when the recurring fees.
I don't think the re- the uh recurring fee is the first year. I can make sure and find out, but I it is my understanding that it's just the 30,000, the first the uh first year, and then the next year it's, you know, 13.
That's the initial startup.
Can't see behind us.
Nathan.
Nathan, I'm sorry.
Just just curious, what are you guys using now for your asset management?
Just as Larry did, right here.
Oh, you guys have to have this. I work with this at my work, not this exact same one. But um without this, you're in the dark. This will tell you where every piece of everything that you have is. And when you lose something, you can look to see if it was lost, if it was sold, what the scenario was. And when you need that serial number, that's the software that gives it to you. The software is definitely, I'm not saying this exact one, but they're pretty much all similar. And uh I would definitely, this will probably save you money in the first two or three years. Because one thing is when you go to do your auditing for insurance companies to find out where all your stuff is, you just print out a report and it's done. Believe me, how long it takes to go and do all of that stuff and and then understand that. Um I would definitely suggest approving this item.
Thank you. Any other questions from uh council?
No, ju- just to let the council know. So if we break it down, 75, 25, um 7,500 comes out of the general fund the first year and then 3,250 the next, every year after that.
And then this would be budgeted every year? Okay. Uh thank you. Oh, any other questions from the audience for this? Okay. Okay, uh number 13, authorize city manager to negotiate a revised contract for animal control services with Gimme Love. Pardon?
I I think they're just going to do it as part of the consent calendar because there was no change.
Because there was no, yeah.
So um with 13, did you have a specific question?
I just wanted to go over it. I mean, there's not a whole lot of information there. So can you kind of give us an idea? I was hoping they were going to be here today so I could ask them some questions.
Sure. So um this was actually your future agenda item um was to find alternative um animal control solutions. And so I met with the city of Avanell and I toured their animal shelter, which is beautiful. And on a side note, they actually play classical music for the dogs in there. It's so cool. Um so anyway, I I met with Avanell. I um had preliminary conversations with Huron because their shelter is not ready yet. And then I met with Gimme Love or Gimme Love. Um and one thing that really stood out is that Gimme Love is a no kill shelter. And so I know that, well, at least it's my opinion, that I think the community would be more in support of contracting with a no kill shelter. And then the other thing that really stood out with Gimme Love is that if we renegotiate the contract that we have with them to expand animal control services, um then the money stays here in Kalinga instead of going to the communities of Avanell or Huron. Um both are great communities and I'm sure both can use the money, but as a city, it would be ideal to keep our money here. And so I met with Gimme Love and they have they have uh one main issue, which is space. Um we think that we've found a solution um that would allow them to house um about 10 to 12 more dogs. And then they are willing to hire essentially a dog catcher uh that would work and go around and pick up stray dogs. And so that is what I would like to, this isn't committing to anything other than sending me the direction of uh working with Gimme Love rather than the city of Huron or the city of Avanell. Um and any draft contract that we would negotiate, then it would come back to the council for consideration and approval.
We talked earlier about this. There's apparently some asbestos issues in this building that we were talking about. Uh we're going to get um costs associated with that before we approve anything, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had.
I had a question. Does uh does Avanell get like a grant or something from Kings County? Or Tulare or something like that that helps them fund their stuff?
So um Avanell uh contracts or the city of Corcoran contracts with the city of Avanell uh for their um animal control. So Corcoran employ and it would have been the same thing for us. So we would have to employ an animal control officer that functioned as a dog catcher who would then transport the animals to Avanell, which is what Huron or I'm sorry, what Corcoran does. Um and they get money. I think it's roughly $45,000 a year from the city of Corcoran for that. Um and then in addition to that, they are usually pretty successful in applying for grants.
There'll be something like that could come this way?
Um from what I understand, uh Gimme Love has been successful in obtaining grants also. And one thing that sets them apart is they are a no kill shelter. And so they are eligible for grants that the city of Avanell may not be eligible for. So um that's not my area of expertise, but that's the way I understood it when it was explained to me by Gimme Love.
Okay, um do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar with uh the um that changes we made?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
Also vote aye. Okay, we'll go to uh number six ordinance presentation, discussion and potential action item. Uh number one, council uh directions regarding a voting dead uh delegate and up to two alter- alternative voting delegates for the business and the annual business meeting. I'm sorry. And up to two alternate voting delegates for the annual business meeting at the League of California Cities 2021 Annual Conference in Sacramento, California.
Sorry, we had asked to move uh number six up so that uh Dan could be here for it before he has to head home. Or I'm sorry, not six, number five.
Number five. I thought that was going to be number the number two, though.
We can do that. Number one's fairly quick.
Okay. Because I put it under number two or like 1A.
Yeah, that's fine. So um do you have anyone that you would like to nominate to be the voting delegates for the uh League of California Cities Conference?
I nominate myself. No, I'm just kidding. I nominate the mayor.
Who else is going? Is everybody going or do you know?
I'm going.
I won't even be here. I I found out the dates in just after the mid September. And I won't even be here. I'll be in Hawaii.
Oh, okay.
I won't be able to go.
So we've registered the mayor, the mayor pro tem, um councilman Atkinson and councilman Ramirez.
So I nominate one and two. The one and two over here.
Now you're going to only nominate one at a time. You can't be jumping around. You're nominating two. You you nominated the mayor.
I'm the one man council. So, okay, first to nominate Mayor Ramsey be the number one delegate for this since he's the mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Adam Atkinson to be the number two.
Okay, any more uh nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Ray.
Ray, Mayor Protem. That's the way it is. You're Mayor Protem, man.
Same here. That's an alternate.
Okay, do our nominations close?
Close it.
Okay. Uh we have a, okay.
You can actually have up to two alternates, so you can vote um based on the nominations if you'd like.
We have two alternates already then. You're an alternate. We don't even need a vote, right? Right?
You do need a vote because those were just nominations.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to have um the mayor and the mayor pro tem as the uh voting delegates and then myself and Councilman Ramirez as the um backup.
You can only have two, sorry. So Mayor Ramsey would be the voting delegate and then the the nominations were for uh Mayor Protem Singleton and yourself to be the two alternates.
Oh, there's a so there's.
Two alternates. There's one one person voting and then two alternates.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, I take care of that for you. Gotcha. Okay. Now, number two, introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance 848. Oh, yeah, the water conservation. Direction, discussion, direction, a potential action item on water conservation update. Thank you. You're on.
When you came up? Oh, okay. Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you. Uh I just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at with uh the water situation. I know it's uh on everyone's mind right now. Just wanted to give you guys an update on the water usage. Um June's usage is unfortunately consistent, was confor- uh unfortunately consistent with last year's um as we presented at the last meeting or as someone else did because I wasn't here. Uh July usage um also is consistent with last July not showing any reduction. Um and so we're we're not quite sure uh why we're not seeing reduction. The letters uh were received probably around July 20th. There was a slight delay in those letters uh being delivered. Um but we feel, you know, I think people are still home because of COVID. We're seeing an increase. July, June, July of last year was relatively high as well compared to previous years. Um and we all know it's been extremely hot uh and dry, and I think that's having a big factor in terms of the conservation efforts. Um I think we saw a slight tick when the letters were received and it's kind of leveled out. But it's we're still trending too high in terms of our usage. Um some of the things that have occurred since the last meeting, um Dan and I and Marissa have actually been on a couple calls with the United States Bureau of Reclamation, who basically provide the city's only source of water. And uh we've had two meetings with them and asked some tough questions to try to find out what where we're at and how what we do moving forward. Um they're in a bad situation. Um but we are preparing a letter to the bureau after long conversations. Um an amended letter that is going to reflect um all the water the city has taken uh plus an increase of about 428 acre feet. We've explained to them that it's challenging, that we are, we've put out the letters, we've been communicating to the public. We've been trying to get conservation to occur. Um we're still not exactly sure why. It's that we're not seeing at at least a drop um of reduction. Uh so we'll be going or hopefully, if we receive it, we'll we'll be going back with the bureau and trying to request inform- request that information in a letter. And hopefully, we hear back from them in a period of time. We'll be reaching out to them probably every other day. So hopefully, we have an update because we will be coming back to the council in on August 19th to provide an update where we're at and also provide potential actions for further conservation uh efforts. So with that, that's kind of where we're at. We have talked to and reached out to Westland's Water District um as well as the San Joaquin River Exchange contractors to see if there is any other water available. Um based on those conversations, there's probably a remote chance of getting any water from them and whether at and at what cost. We don't know what cost. The cost of water is extremely expensive right now. Um and most likely what they're talking about is what's called supplemental water, which typically doesn't come until the fall when they release water from Shasta for the salmon run. So that's typically when you'll see additional water flow from Shasta through the delta. Um but it's not a reliable source because we need to conserve now is what we need to conserve. And so, I mean, we're looking at, based on what we currently have, is that our allocations were exceeding our 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 schedule. We provide a water schedule to the bureau every year for a monthly allocation or a monthly schedule of water use. We've exceeded that each month so far in the water year. Um and potentially would be at our contracted allotment by December 1st, the way we're projecting right now. So what USBR tells us, water keeps flowing, right? But essentially, we have a contracted amount. And when we start taking more water than what we are supposed to contractually take, we're taking other folks' water. I mean, it's 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 a hard concept. I'm learning a lot about water in the last two years. Uh Dan's kind of our expert when it comes to water. However, it's, we all see the water in the canals, but it's all accounted for. It's all taken. And so we've got to continue to try to conserve as much as possible. And uh I mean, at that point, that's kind of where we're at right now when it comes to the conservation efforts are kind of our our number. Our, kind of our, our numbers. And that's, if you guys have any questions, let me know. So you talked about the numbers. What are the numbers? Do you have, do you have any of the numbers, Dan, on? Oh, you know what? It might be on that.
Yeah, they were gonna give us an updated allocation or something that we were waiting for.
Well, we did, we did request, based on the initial letter, that twenty-five percent reduction. They said submit a new schedule. That was the schedule that we sent them. We sent them a letter in June. That was for the thirty-four hundred and eighty-nine acre foot allocation. That, we did receive a letter. They accepted that amount. But we are exceeding the schedule that we provided them for the rest of the year. We have been exceeding that. So I, I believe last month we said we used approximately somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and thirty acre feet of water. So what do we use this month or in July? Was it five hundred?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Thirty and what was the previous one from the year before? Five nineteen, right?
That's it.
Yep. Okay. And according to our original agreement with the bureau. How are we? With the original agreement before cuts, are we staying within our allotment? Or the, so our current contract with the bureau in a good water year or our contracted amount is ten thousand acre feet? What we started at from the very beginning of the year, we had an agreement to get, what was it, ten thousand acre? Ten thousand acre feet is typically a year on an unconstrained year where rain, you know, we're, we're, we're fine. And that was, I think, probably what, two years ago, we had that? Is that what we had for this year though? Ten thousand? We have a ten thousand acre foot contract, but the bureau has the right to reduce that allotment based on water supply. Okay. Now, are we within that original area? Are we within the ten thousand? Are we gonna stay within ten thousand for the year? We, what do we historically use for like?
About four thousand acre feet.
So we're way under that. Yeah. We typically are able to sell wholesale water. Whenever we have anything allotment over what we typically use. So. Cause I, I do have a, I mean, we have, I don't know if I have the actual numbers on here, but we do have a chart that kind of shows the historical trends. We've slightly had an uptick since the fourteen fifteen drought. But twenty twenty was probably one of the highest years we've had since two thousand thirteen. And there's just, I don't know how else to explain why we've seen an increase. I mean, we have seen an increase in population in terms of housing numbers. We did issue a lot of building permits in the last two and a half, three years. So, but these houses, the, the way the landscaping is, it's not as significant as huge lawns. They've got these small patchy lawns with bark and some plant material.
Well, now that the letters are out now, because they were, you said they weren't on time. You think their numbers are gonna drop for this next month?
I don't know.
I'll, I'll answer that for you now.
And I, I can answer that question too. I conserve like crazy on my waters. And my bill was the highest it's ever been. It was a hundred and forty-three dollars or something like that. And the newspaper lady and I were comparing our, our stuff when we were doing all this. And we were trying to, to see what we could do the best. And if you go to my, my house right now, my, my front yard, it's, it's brown. In fact, my little side yard right there, I have a side yard. You step on it and it crackles. It's, it's gonna die. And so I, I've tried to do all kinds of stuff to, to make it, make it so. And then I had actually two, more residents in my house that I don't have anymore. And so we've, we've conserved, there's two of us and it's the highest bill we've ever had. So I don't know what's happening either.
But, but like you said, you know, population, right? I mean, we also have labor, labor workers coming in. Hotels are fully stocked. I mean, you know, that, that, that could cause it to go up, right?
But to see, but not to, but when, I mean, I was here back in fourteen fifteen and I apologize, this is going longer than my boss expected, but. Landscaping accounts for almost seventy-five percent, if not more, of our water consumption. So typically, like back in fourteen fifteen, we saw a drastic decrease when we started, you know, when we had the three days a week or two days a week watering. You know, when people reduce outdoor watering, you see a dramatic decrease in water conservation or in, in water usage. We're not seeing that. We're still seeing the, the Derek tank drop significantly at night. Which means everyone's sleeping for the most part, which means the only thing that's actually using water is everyone's sprinklers. And so when you're still seeing the tank drop at the middle of the night, ten, fifteen feet at, in sometime, in some cases. That's a significant amount of water. So there still is outdoor irrigation going on. I mean, we've specifically talked to the schools, the college. My goal is to go back and kind of follow up with them, see how they're doing. Because I know they have a lot of automation on their, on their sprinkler. So they are able to basically say, hey, we need to dial it down fifty percent. They can do that in their system and it automatically adjusts. And they have priorities in terms of what they want to preserve and what they don't have to preserve either. So, but seeing the trends that we were seeing, we're not, we're not seeing any drop. It's still go, it's higher than last year.
Can I have a question in the back?
This is resident Scott Netherston. Layman's terms, you don't want a car to speed, you put a governor on it. Is there no technology out there that can restrict the amount going out? I mean, you pinch the hose and they get less water. They're still watering thirty minutes. They think they're doing good.
The, the, the issue with that on residential especially is that you're, the water that services your house services your sprinklers. So with commercial, when you have a landscape meter and you've got someone that's maybe abusing the water on a landscape meter, you can turn that landscape meter off. And you still don't affect the business. But for a residence, we can't turn their water off because they're watering too much because of the health and safety issue. And I say that because that's just the truth. We can't, we can't turn their water off because they're watering too much. And so, because then you, it becomes a major health, health issue.
Hey, Mary? Thanks, Sean.
I'm still Mary Jones. In June, there was a, a release of data that, that provided that curve chart that indicated that eighty, about eighty percent of the residents were conserving water, maybe not enough. But they were conserving some water while this sliver of people were just crazy. Do we have data that would reflect that same information for the month of July?
Yes, it's a good question and it looks about the same.
Okay. Because in reality, for average people, we are trying. I, we cut down, I think, almost twenty percent, which for, you know, we have more people than in our house than we did before. So we, we're conserving. But I think the people that are conserving deserve a little, I don't know, pa, I it's, I know it's cata, can be cataclysmic, but some of us are trying really, really hard and some people aren't caring at all. So I would just like to encourage us to, as a, as a city seeking direction. Don't slap everyone with the same mean stick.
Mayor, may I have just a moment?
Yes.
The, the way the drought, to answer Mary's question, the way the drought charge structure is set up is people who are using reasonable amounts of water will not be penalized. We, we plan for that. Sean covered all the content. I've shared with some of you my tombstone image. And I just want to put it out there. It's that tombstone that, that you read that says, I told you I was sick. And, and that's the message we're getting from the bureau. Even for them, they're in an uncharted place. We had to have two meetings with them to help them communicate to us really very clearly. Because of the way our contract's written, it's, our contract's fairly general about what if there's not enough water? But the clear message they gave is that when we use up our allotment, which will happen around December first, based on projections we did today, we're taking someone else's water out of the aqueduct. Now, we don't know how that would play out, but that's a pretty clear message.
But it used to be, we had ten thousand acres. So people were using our water. Because we didn't use it. We only used four thousand acres of water. So they were using our water. Now we want it back.
Well, on that note, as they explained it to us, as we pursued them in the, in the reservoirs in Shasta and in a lot, it's Los Banos, right? The one that's it's, it's state water and it's federal water. And so what's happening already is the, the United States Reclamation is taking state water. So they've got to pay it back at some point. So that, that's what goes on. I've been in Koalinga for a couple of days and I've been out on my bike and out around the community. And it's all about lawns and landscape. It is all about lawns and landscape. You can see it out there. You know, there's a dry lawn and there's a really green lawn. And the concern, of course, is the drought, the drought charge isn't enough. It's people, where people have spent thousands of dollars on landscape. You know, they're, just say, heck, I'll pay it. And, and so the concern, you know, back to that tombstone image is especially if we don't get moisture this winter, there won't be any lawns. Lake Shasta is at fifty percent right now. So, and headed downward. But because of the relationship the city has with the bureau, they're, they're not coming down hard. It's not that kind of relationship. If it were that kind of a relationship where we got slapped hard, we'd be complaining about that. So in a sense, you know, they're giving us leeway to manage that on this side. So while all of that said, I just think it's so important to take this seriously. And in the next couple of weeks before the next city council meeting, what steps can be taken to meaningfully require people to really conserve because it's not happening yet?
I agree. And I, I think the first step should be is to commend those citizens that are cutting back on their water. Because like Mary said, and which is beautiful, you can't put everybody in the same pot just because we're in the same city. Some people are doing their job and definitely commend them on doing their job. It's the ones that don't see the vision of not having water that continue to have their green lawns and kind of wash their cars outside with, I can afford the water, so I'll keep on going, which is, is a, is a bad idea. Because there's nothing that the city can impose on certain people that they can't afford. So they look at that mentality, fifty bucks, I got it. My yard's still green. As opposed to now, your yard is brown, mine is green. So now I'm using your water the same way that you were saying that we only use four and we allotted ten. It's the same thing. Somebody's using somebody else's water at the end of the day. There shouldn't be any green lawns in, in Koalinga. That, that's just, it shouldn't be from the data that they're showing us how much we're using. And so we commend you definitely, but the ones that don't, I, I think we're gonna have to step up our game in order to get them to realize they can't continue on this path and think that water's gonna be here forever. I mean, it, it, it just can't happen though. So we have to stiffen up our end of the deal to ensure that you can afford it, but it's gonna sting a little bit. And it should, it should because that, that's just crazy amount that we're using and we're supposed to be on the downside.
Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Dominguez. Do you folks recall, oh, about twenty, thirty years ago, fuel shortage? And in Nevada, if you went, if you exceeded the speed limit, Nevada doesn't have a speed limit. They wrote you up for wasting a natural resource. And they, you, you were fined and there was no discussion. I didn't do it. No, the officer's wrong. You got the ticket, you paid the fine if you wanted to keep your vehicle registered and your license intact. So I think you're looking at, you're gonna have to move to enforcement. We keep dancing around. We don't want to do that. Kind of think of it this way. There's no shortage. There's no water shortage. Why? Because I turned on the faucet, water keeps coming out. And that's the mentality out there right now with all these people that have PGA green lawns. They're overwatering. That timer's going too long. You don't need that much water to have a reasonably green lawn.
But the only thing I, I see, I see what you're saying there too. But why aren't we seeing this all over the state of California? I mean, I know the, the other people have wells and stuff like that. You don't hear any of this down in LA. They can use as much water as they want and, and as far as we know, but they're getting these small towns like here because they can control them.
And that's gonna
And that's not, that's not right. It's not right. Go ahead, go ahead.
That's gonna tie into a future agenda item I have. When I start seeing San Francisco lawns start going brown, when I start seeing Beverly Hills lawns start growing brown, when I start seeing Hollywood lawns start going brown, then I'm gonna believe we have a water problem. Because right now all we're seeing is the poor cities' lawns who have to go brown. So I'm sick of that and that's gonna tie into another future agenda item I have.
I just came from LA, green lawns. There's actually, there was actually a pumpkin, pumpkin patch with six water freaking damn, you know, blow up water things. And water spilling out. How we, the little small towns in the valley suffering with this? Why can't we come with, with something like Mr. Mayor said? You know, when we have ten and we only use four, why wouldn't we're in an emergency? Why can't we, you know, we could get help? Why all these damn cities are getting all the green stuff and we're getting stuff from where I have to put penalties on our own, own citizens on that? You know, I know I'm not blaming nobody and anything like that, but it just doesn't make sense, man. Doesn't make sense that us, you know, we, we have our citizens wasting so much money on their lawns that they work for, hard money that they work for. And, and now we have to tell them, hey, we're gonna squish our money and, you know, it, it it just doesn't make sense.
Another issue I have is the fact that the prisons and the hospital are using twenty percent of our water. They say they can cut nothing. So if we have the residents of Koalinga who actually are able to cut twenty percent, their usage of Koalinga water goes up. Not just twenty percent, now we're talking around thirty percent if the rest of Koalinga cuts down their water. Why? The citizens of Koalinga have to suffer while the state prison and the state hospital can do whatever the hell they want because they don't want their prisoners to take shorter showers. So that's gonna tie into another future agenda item I have. About this state providing us with more water. The state needs to start throwing in some water out of their reservoirs to the city of Koalinga in order to facilitate the use of the hospital and the prison.
Okay, Mary, did you have something? Okay, thank you.
So what, just a follow up comment. In the request we made to the bureau, the last one for water. We requested the water that the state hospital and prison asked for. But see, now we're gonna put another, and they gave it to us, right? So now we're gonna put another request in because there was a little bit of a hint in the call to ask us for more water. There's no commitment that they'll give us more water, but that letter will go out soon, tomorrow or Monday is
Well, wasn't, wasn't that what you said last time too? I mean, I thought that was what they said last time too.
Said.
That we might get a little bit more this next time.
Well, now we're asking for it sooner than they expected us to ask for it. Last time and, and what they're still thinking about is in a little bit later this year, probably in October. They start to release water from Lake Shasta for the fish and that water can flow down and be recovered to go this
Into the ocean. Yeah, because it'll go right around the corner and go to the ocean.
Well, that happens too, but in this case, they have more available supply for their contractors in October. And that's what I referred to last time. But now what we're doing is we're sending a letter, a follow up letter to them now saying, look, this isn't as we expected, we need more water now.
Yeah. Well, you know, we're gonna, I think we're gonna discuss a whole lot. I mean, we've got a, a good program going right now. That, that hopefully it'll work. And I think we should just go with the same program we've got this month that we had this last month. And see what we are because we were late on getting it out. And maybe more people will start seeing this again. And because it's just, I don't want to put any more penalties out there for anybody. I think we just, we already have the penalties in place right now. I don't want to make it harder on anybody else right now. And then if, if it doesn't work this next time. We'll have, we'll have to mandate the, the prison and the state hospital. Cause that's part of our allocation. We'll have to mandate them to cut back. Because what, that's what we're doing to our citizens right now. So I think we ought to just leave it the way it is. I mean, it's, hopefully it'll start working.
And just to clarify, the state has received the same letters. So if they choose not to conserve, they will pay the drought charge as well.
Right.
So it's not like they're, we recognize they're not gonna say. The state has billions and billions of dollars at their disposal. No, I, I, I get it.
Now, there's no
You know, one funny thing is that I was a president and there was a flyer about some You know, one funny thing is that I was in Fresno and there was a flyer about some boat race up in the lake up there in the Sierras. That they filled up the lake just to have that boat race.
But the water was donated.
You know, that's ridiculous for a boat race. And we can't take a damn shower because we get fined.
Is this it? Information only, wasn't it?
Yeah. So we're not asking for any uh, action to be taken.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the audience or anything? Yes, come on up. Could you come up here to the microphone? Everybody else has, come on. Thank you.
Chris Wallace is my name. Um, can we have some kind of a, like a campaign? Like I know we have the billboard that has. The lights and you know, over there by Scrivener's Phil and stuff. Maybe we can put some.
Our community sign.
Over across from the, at the plaza, conserve water, you know, signs everywhere, please conserve water. You know, something like that. That's just an idea.
Okay.
Well, I believe we do have, we have a sign out there by Sandalwood and then we have our light up sign that's also saying conserve water as well.
And I. Say, have them check Sandalwood because I think they're watering every morning. And it's real pretty and I like it, but you know.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to um. Uh, number two, introduce faith um, and wave first reading of ordinance eight forty-eight amending the section. Six one point two six relating to vicious dogs. Sean.
Good evening. So this is requested by council for staff to go over community, Kalinga municipal code, excuse me, six dash one point two six regarding vicious dogs. Uh, what they're wanting is to add or make some changes to it regarding the penalties. What we came up with was. To add a subsection, uh, be subsection E, which will define the penalties if. The owners of the dogs or um, the caretaker of the dog do not follow basically municipal code. Uh, it's already listed as a misdemeanor, but the changes we're looking at are actually. Uh, issuing citations. So now staff will actually issue a citation for any dog that's out there who attacks another dog or person. Along with that, the dog uh. Shall be seized and taken basically into custody pending a hearing with the chief or his designee.
They're not doing that now?
Uh, right now it's at the discretion of the officer. So we take into account um, basically how the dog escaped. So we can find the owner. Why the dog was out. If it's something to where, hey, we tried to keep it in the kennel, but it broke through. That is taken into account. Um, now that's no longer taken into account. So if the. Owner of the dog or the caretaker basically just blatantly lets it loose and unfortunately that happens a lot. There will be issued citation for him. We'll take the dog.
What, what's the fine for this?
I don't believe that's been set.
It says right up, up on top, let's see.
Yeah, there's the old mountain actually sitting there though.
That's the old one, yeah.
So this is any dog that gets out, who bites a person or another dog will get a citation.
And the dog taken away, yes.
And the dog taken away. Now, are we going to set the fine?
Yeah, the council will set the fine. Yeah, council will set the fine. Um, there are maximums though, that you can um, issue on administrative citations. Otherwise they become misdemeanors and then there's, there's maximums for those as well. So on these admin citations, yeah, there are maximums that.
What are the maximums?
I think it's a thousand.
And it just if they bite somebody or what about the dog gets out, chases a kid numerous times?
Well, even if it's just chasing, you can still consider it attacking because it is still going after that person, kid, child, or their animal, whatever it is. So we can still take action on that.
Okay.
Now does an officer have to see it?
No.
Because I've heard of that before too, you know?
If we were making an actual arrest, yes, because it is a misdemeanor. In this case, we can issue the citation and let the courts figure it out from there. So it would be a criminal citation versus the admin citation. So you'd actually have to go to court to pay whatever fine the court sets for it.
And if they could prove that they didn't chase it or, or whatever, they could, they could get out of the fine. Okay. So I think we're in agreement of we need this, this rule, but basically now we're looking at the fine. Well, so what would you suggest?
The, the way this would be written is it would be a criminal citation versus an administrative citation. So as far as actually setting a fine, that wouldn't be done by us. It'd be taken care of by the courts. Cause it wouldn't come through the administrative side of the city itself.
How many vicious attacks were there this year?
I'd have to look that up. I don't have that on me.
My dog got out one time and attacked a dog and a little small dog and. Picked the dog up and ran down the street with it in his mouth. Um, anyways, the dog ended up had a, had to get a stitch. But I got a $500 fine from it. And I'm wondering, where did that fine come from? It's not in here.
It's coming from the court, just like he said then.
If that's.
We, we could leave it up to the court then.
Yeah, mine, mine was 600 plus um, vet damages.
$400.
Yeah. Would you guys like to go ahead and leave it up to the court then? That way. That way they could, they could prove it or disprove it, you know?
What do you recommend?
Is there a way we could put like a, a, the first fine and then the second one?
Well, I think the court would handle all that.
Well, if, if you guys decided to do something like that, it would be happy reworded to where it would be an administrative citation at first. And then you follow up, go to the criminal citation.
So can we just make like a $300 fine that way?
It would have to come back to you, right? Because I believe what he stated is it's worded right now that it would be criminal. And so that automatically leaves it to the court to set the fine. So if you want it to be administrative and you want to set the fine, then this item's going to have to come back.
All right, I'll let the court set the fine.
Okay.
Obviously you're going to see more with the actual penalties on top of that vet bills and stuff like that, that the courts can impose versus what the city would be able to.
Now, will, will the city of Kalinga get a portion of those fines?
I don't know.
Can you, does anybody have a motion to accept this? Uh, to make it a. To make it a, uh, it's not a misdemeanor. It's a.
It's, it's, it's.
It is a misdemeanor still.
It would be as written here to issue criminal citations only. So there'd be no administrative side of things anymore.
And still go to court though. Okay. So is that somebody's motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to um, go with this as a. As a, as a court case, basically, I guess, yeah. Uh, roll call vote please.
Mayor Protim Singleton.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilman Horn.
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson.
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey.
Okay, we'll go to number three. Thank you, Sean. We'll go to item number three, council direction and potential action item. Uh, related to commercial cannabis, outdoor, indoor nursery cultivation tax rates and structures. Sean, make it short.
Any questions? Uh, so Councilman Atkinson uh, had asked that staff investigate cultivation tax rates for both indoor and outdoor facilities. Um, he also requested that staff investigate the possibility of a tiered rate structure. Um, staff's provided some information in this report to allow the council to provide direction to staff. To see if you guys would like to proceed with any changes in our current uh, cultivation structure. Um, staff utilized the services and just for the record on the staff report, it should be named global regulatory risk advisors. To provide detailed related, detailed data related to cannabis taxes throughout the state of California. Reporting information that was provided included tax rates, which is basically the dollar amount or percentage. And the basis, which is basically either square footage, a minimum fee, gross receipts, et cetera. The city's current tax rates for cultivation is $7 per square foot of canopy and $2 per square foot for nursery. The city does not currently have an outdoor specific rate. So outdoor cultivation is currently charged the commercial cultivation rate of the $7. So after reviewing the data from uh, G R R A. Staff made some determinations to assist the council in determining if they'd like to proceed with the change in the tax structure. For the commercial cultivation, both indoor, outdoor and nurseries. So as it relates to outdoor first, tax rates and bases is, they're all over the place. Uh, as it relates to outdoor cultivation in California, there's not really any major consistency. Um, there were 38 jurisdictions identified in the data that had rate structures in place for outdoor cultivation. Um, it was about 50 50 split among city and county jurisdictions, which actually surprised me. Um, as it relates to square foot basis tax rates, they ranged from 41 cents. In the city of Adalano to $13.20 at the city of Long Beach per square foot. In contrast, gross receipts range from 2% at the city of Santa Barbara at a 10% in the city of San Bruno. Staff did not see any data that had tiered rates for taxes, other than Mendocino County that has like a minimum fee. Or the greater of 2, 2.5% gross receipts. However, that rate structure doesn't really represent a true tiered rate structure. That I imagine uh, the council will be looking for. Uh, so for outdoor nurseries, uh, the rates are lower as the majority of square foot rates were $1 per square foot. And 1% to 10% gross receipts with the majority around 4% gross receipts. So for indoor cultivation, again, tax rates and basis were all over the table as it relates to indoor cultivation as well. Basis. For indoor cultivation range from gross receipts to square footage as well. Uh, the data showed about 47 jurisdictions charging gross receipts ranging from 1 to 10%. With um, even distribution kind of between that spectrum. So we kind of looked at it. The data kind of showed that it was like, there wasn't really like, oh, there's a couple at $1 and everyone's at 10. They were like. Evenly distributed among that, that uh, spectrum. Let's see where, oh, the data showed about 130 jurisdictions charging square foot tax. Ranging from a dollar per square foot in Grass Valley, the city of uh, Lassen and California City. To 1750 in the city of Bellflower. Um, and when looking at the data, uh, there isn't even distribution of values for tax rates between $1 and 10. With the most landing right around that $7 uh, number. Uh, so in terms of the tiered rate approach, um, since it was requested. That can staff considered a tiered rate structure, um, staff's not recommending a tiered rate for nurseries. Since they're typically ancillary to the main cultivation operation relatively small. Um, but we also, I haven't, I provided a couple out uh, examples of some um. Tiered rate structures. I didn't put dollar amounts because I think I want the, I want the council bill to kind of provide guidance in terms of how we want to proceed. But in terms of out, outdoor cultivation, we were looking at basically like, you could look at a three tiered structure. Uh, basically a price per square foot for the first acre. And I, you, we, I mean, I broke up outdoor and indoor just because outdoors typically larger than your typical indoor facility. So from a scaling standpoint, you can use the acres compared to square feet. Um, on the actual canopy. And then you could do a price per square foot for the second acre, and then you could do a price per square foot for canopy that, for that third acre or more. Um, for indoor, be similar where you could do a price per square foot for the first 20,000 square feet. Which would be consistent with the state's requirements for a large indoor grow. And then you could look at a price per square foot of canopy beyond that 20,000 square feet. So anything above that would be billed at a different tax rate. Or you could look at another tiered structure, like a three tiered for the first 20,000 square feet, you could go 20,001 to 40,000. You can go 40,000 above. So there's kind of a menu of options that you could choose from in terms of how we would want to look at, you know, indoor cultivation. And basically fiscal impact related to kind of, any kind of change. Um, it would adjust, if any kind of adjustment to the city's cultivation tax rate. Um, at this point would be undetermined until a rate's decided. Um, a reduction in current tax rates would obviously affect the anticipated revenue generated from cultivation operators. Based on the present tax rate, but once council directs staff to review, we'll review the particular rate. And then provide an analysis and the impact based on that change. So with that, hopefully that'll generate some discussion amongst the members. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Uh, do we have any questions?
Or direction?
Don't pay nothing, right?
What was that? If you want to consider, I think 41 cents, yeah, that's not very much. That's out, that's outdoor cultivation. And probably I think it's in a county, which means that, you know, they're doing acres and acres and acres. It's really scalable. So counties tend to have a little bit lower rate. Some of the cities have a little bit higher rates.
I forget the city is around Palm Springs. I guess they have a lot of cultivation and, you know, around there.
Yeah, Desert Hot Springs. I don't think I had them listed because they were kind of in the middle of the spectrum, but they are, I think they're pretty low as well.
Yeah, they, there's like zero, they just get the. Whatever, whatever the city.
There was one that was zero. Yes. And I think that is Desert Hot Springs. But I maybe I, I maybe wrong, but I think I remember doing, seeing one that was zero.
So what, what are you looking at from us at this time? You're not looking for dollar amounts per square foot, are you?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, do we want to change the rate? Uh, I know that you kind of asked if you wanted to go to a tier rate. Do we want to adjust it right now? I think at least we need to, we need to establish an outdoor rate because we have outdoor cultivation. And um, looking at the, looking at the actual values for outdoor cultivation. Obviously, city of Long Beach at 1320 is extremely high. But I think that you're, you're looking at trying to look at some ti, establish some type of outdoor rate that would be reasonable.
And, okay. Can we table this until next meeting? Do you mind? Anybody? I need to do.
No, we can table it. Do a little more research. The mayor uh, had to go waters yard real quick. I'm gonna go ahead and take over the meeting. He'll be right back, right back, right back. But uh, you want to table this? Okay.
Yes. Is there anything you need from staff?
I'll go to you. I need to, I need to run a bunch.
Cool. Thank you.
Did a lot of traveling last week, so it wasn't.
It's an easy copy and paste job. You just have to hear me talk again.
He's back. Did you get that yard watered?
Yeah.
Tabled that one and we are on item four.
Okay, table three, okay. Uh, number four, discussed, uh, discussion and direction and potential action item regarding. Posing to the voters, questions of whether the mayor position. Excuse me. Should be elected at large. Oh, I have a hard time breathing. Okay, now, okay, could you read it for a second?
Sure. Uh, discussion, direction and potential action regarding posing to the voters, the question of whether the mayor's position should be elected at large. And placing the item on the November 2022 election ballot. Um, this item was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson. Um, initially the item was to go on the recall election ballot, which I believe is September 14th. Um, and the county rejected it uh, based on some action taken by the state to prevent other measures from being placed on that ballot. And so the request is to place it on the November 2022 ballot, which actually ends up being your cheapest option possibly. Um, the county could not prepare a cost estimate for that because it's so far in advance. However. Looking back at measure J and the cost to the city when that was placed on the ballot for a general election year, we paid $4,000. Um, and so that item is here for you to discuss and decide if you'd like to place the at-large mayor item on the November 2022 ballot.
So basically what we're doing is moving it from the recall election to the 2022 ballot. That's it. Um, I guess Governor Newsom decided that we can't walk and chew gum at the same time. He doesn't want anything else on the ballot except for his recall. So that way you can't generate support for other things. So um, our only option is to move it to the November 22, 2022 election. That's all this is.
Yeah, any discussion?
Correct. So um, the county bills us after the fact and. The way that they determine how much the item costs is based on how many items are on that ballot. And so. Um, generally it's significantly lower to place an item on a regular election ballot in a general election year.
And since, since that time we voted too, I've had a lot of people come up to me and. Asked me why I uh, had my vote to uh, to vote for this. They said that uh, we can look at the state of California right now. And we're doing a recall on the governor. And right now we don't have to do a recall. We can do it uh, as a council itself. And people said you guys are, you said you're trying to save money, but then you're throwing away money for other stuff, you know? And we are getting, and they said that. If you want the people to vote for the mayor, they're already voting for the mayor. Because when they vote for each one of us, any of us could be the mayor. So.
Another part of it too is. There's actually a chance, a chance to switch out every two years anyways, because of the. because of the way the districts are set up right now. You get, you could get two new people or three new people in there and readjust.
Well, if we, if we did this, I would rather had vote for a mayor every two years. And then that way, you could, you could have a mayor, if it goes like that, I would rather see it like that, you know, and. Pardon me?
You're on.
Yeah. But people say it's, right now, it's, it's easier to get rid of people if you don't want them in there, you know? And so unless you guys can change my vote, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on it this time, so.
If this went to the people, do you think would happen?
I don't, really don't know, for sure.
Well, why don't you find out?
Well, they've already voted. They've, this has been good for 100 years.
Well, I don't think it's been done the way, it hasn't been done that way the whole 100 years.
How's it been done?
Well, you can go back and look in the books. The, I don't understand why we're so afraid of the people.
I'm not, I'm not afraid with people.
Then let them decide.
They have decided. They put us in here to make the decisions. And we have to make the decisions. And I'm in a position right now where my vote is gonna count yes or no. And so they're telling me, what do I want to vote? They voted for me, so I'm gonna vote for what I think is right.
For the issues. So, okay, so, but 15,000 people have claimed to say that they want to pick a mayor. We're leaving that up to three people?
There's 15,000 people that saying they want, they want to pick a mayor? Show me the 15,000.
Put it to the vote. I'll show you. I'll show you that we're gonna get at least 75% yes. If we don't get that.
Is this for a census? Is that what this is for, or is it for actually putting it on the ballot? This, or is it?
This is to put it on the ballot.
If the citizens want us to do that?
No, this is to put it on the ballot.
The ballot is, so the citizens would decide if they're gonna pick the mayor or not. I guarantee you.
We would actually put it on the ballot if it passed.
Each one up here. It's gonna pass by at least two-thirds, that I will resign if it doesn't, if you decide to resign if it doesn't.
Well, I won't be here after that.
This will pass overwhelmingly.
Feel Mary Joan.
I hope so.
You never know. If, if you were to take the ballots, and you would have to go, not just who got the most votes, but you'd have to go per capita in voting, the percentage in each district, the person, you'd have, you'd have to level the playing fields, because there is going to be some districts where your voting level is going to be much higher than in other areas. So the person that won with 10 votes is not really equal to the person that won by 2,000 votes. But supposedly, they could be neck and neck. So it's a little more complicated than just saying that you decide when you vote. And we do live in a representative democracy, rather than a democracy. It's a republic. And all that stuff. I would feel better somehow if, A, there was some sort of a little stronger, I, I thought I was under the impression that we had already set up some guidelines, like the mayor had to be a sitting council member, already like not a newly elected, and that the pro tem was preferably not a new person, but it could be. I think the part that makes it hard as a public to stomach is that there's sort of a cavalier, I've already decided attitude to us, to me. That's what it appears. With it, when you, when you're up there discussing it, it's like a done deal. That's what it appears to be. I don't know. I don't know if it is or not. I think if it was a, a private vote, like a, like a secret ballot, that would improve things. I think that if there was, like in other situations, when people get up and they actually make some sort of statement about why they feel like they deserve the position, like when you do the city planning commission people, something like that, that just gives it a little bit of formality, rather than, oh, hey, I like Joey Shotpool last week, or whatever it is. And we don't, as a public, we're not getting that. But there is not a lot of confidence. Right now, I'm really happy with the way the council is acting towards each other in general, and, and good humor from Councilman Singleton, that it just is like a little perk. And, and I would like to see that feeling go on, and, and when things are stressful, it's hard as citizens to trust y'all. And it's not like I don't, but I get a little queasy thinking about, you, you have a lot of power. And I would just like you to see it, to see it used as even-handedly as possible. I don't think any of you is, is a, is a bad person at all. But I would like to see some sort of meritocracy, some sort of why a person should be whatever they are. Mayor is just a figurehead, right? We all know that. So it's not like he gets a bonus candy bar. I'm sorry.
I wish. You pay my city, you pay my water bill.
No, hey, we'll trade, trade ya.
And, and that's the thing, I, I see both sides of the spectrum, I guess you can say. I see the fact that Ron says we're elected to be a mayor at, at any given time. And I see what Adam is saying, that the citizens want to say, we voted him as a mayor and them as our city councils. But when I was talking to people in the public, they thought that the mayor would have mayor powers. And it, I tried to explain to him that it doesn't happen that way. He's gonna get the same vote, no matter where he sits at. So it kind of deflated them saying, aw, that's it? It's like, you know, we thought we were gonna select the mayor that was gonna have that special power, like, but it doesn't work like that. So that kind of teetered them to say, then, why do it? You know, I mean, so it's, it's, it's one of those swords that most people will vote, but what they're getting out of their vote is what they really don't know. They're voting for a mayor to run the city, but at any given time, he's still gotta go through all of us with one single vote. So it's, it's a tough call though, for both sides though.
So can I just explain how it would work hypothetically? So if you vote to have this item placed on the ballot for November of 2022, then it would happen in November of 2024. So you aren't gonna have on the same ballot in November of 2022 an item to say whether you want this or not, and the possibility of electing someone into that position. So it happens the following election cycle, which would be November of 2024.
Well, and just saying on that, in, in the past, I've seen it where they vote for, if you want an elected mayor, you can vote for that, but then you also vote for the council and, and it's, it's, they've, they've ran for both of them. I've seen it in other, other deals where they've done it together. So, I mean, if we did it, we could do it together.
I, I think that only worked when everyone was at large, and now that you're in districts, it won't work, because someone's gonna be running at large for the mayor position, and then people are gonna be running for the districts. And the results of the election aren't going to be counted until the results are counted for that same item. So you have to have them separated on separate ballots. So you'll have November of 2022, do we want this? If it's, if the people vote yes, then on the, you already have three people that were elected that year. And so then the at-large mayor would happen in November of 2022, and the two remaining council seats are up.
And since we.
Correct.
And since we've gone to these districts, it has significantly reduced the public's power in their city government. So now, instead, the public, every person out here, used to be able to vote for all five council members. Now they can only vote for one. With an at-large mayor, we are doubling their voter power and what they want to see for the city by allowing them to vote for the council member in their district, and also the mayor at large.
Well, aren't we gonna, aren't we gonna try to change the, the districts too? Aren't we gonna vote for that, I forgot the name of it? Because we, we've talked about it. Yeah, rank-based.
Yes, so that is an item that we're continuing to work on, and I don't know if Mario has an update, but the last that we heard was that Fresno County Elections Office is not in agreement with the city doing that. And we're sort of stuck in a difficult position, because they're the ones that process the election. And so while we don't agree that they shouldn't accept that type of election system, they are the ones that run it, and they're saying that they're not capable of running it that way.
Slightly, slightly different. I think they, they are unsure of whether they would let the city, but I know what they've told us is that the software that they have will do it.
Thank you.
I just feel we shouldn't be afraid of the citizens. Let the citizens dictate to us what we're gonna do. And the way they're gonna dictate it to us is by having an election. The election's not that expensive. What would you say, 4,000 or something like that?
That is my best estimate, but please don't hold me to that.
1,000. We spent today, we spent over 160 something thousand in today's agenda, 160 something thousand in today's agenda. Alone. So let the voters dictate to us what's gonna happen. That's all we're doing. We're not saying we're going to an at-large mayor. We're just saying, you guys decide if we need to go to an at-large mayor. And they will dictate to us what their answer is, and what their answer is, is what we'll go by.
Do I have a motion? I'm asking, yeah, but we have to have a motion to accept this, or not to accept it, basically.
I guess the motion, I thought I made the motion last time, on the 2022 gen, I mean, 2022 election, if we couldn't put it on this one.
We checked in the minutes, and that's not the motion that was made. That was initially the motion that you made when Mayor Ramsey was gone at the first meeting. But that was not the motion that was made at the meeting when it passed, to place it on September 14th.
All right, like I said, I, I wish the people to dictate to us what they want. And the, the way we do that is by letting them decide it through an election process. So my motion is to put it on the 2022 general election.
Has been motioned, is there a second?
I'll second, and the reason I'll second is because that's what I ran on when I ran for city council, is that we should have a voted-in mayor. So I'll stick to my word. We should have, the citizens should have an opportunity to vote for a mayor. So not gonna change, I'm gonna stay the course. I'll second.
Kid's been made in second.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Prochim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
No.
Councilman Ramirez?
No.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote now. Okay, we'll go to item. That's the last of them, right? We'll go to announcements? Is there, is there anything else? Okay, city manager's announcements?
I just wanted to thank everyone for assisting with National Night Out. Number six was pulled at the beginning of the meeting. I just wanted to thank everyone for their help with National Night Out on Tuesday. Not only city staff, but the vendors and the donors that we had. Also, if you saw the flyers on the doors at City Hall or the City Facebook page today, we have the flyers now for the Lisa Project, which is gonna be going on in October. So I encourage everyone to participate in that, and those are the only announcements that I have.
Okay, any announcements from members? Okay, mayor's announcements? I have none. I just wanted to reiterate how good that National Night Out was. And I put it on my website, though. I took a bunch of pictures and I sent them to you too, so. Of the website. Everybody really liked it too, so. That's all I have. Any future agenda items?
So one, I'd like to see us make a resolution to send to our, it's called a resolution, I don't know what you call it, send to our state senator and our state assemblyman, even though they're completely useless. And also send it to Senator Hurtado, who actually is doing something for the valley, that says that we would like the state to allocate us somewhere between 50 and 100 acre feet of water per month in order to offset the use from the prison and the hospital. Number two, I would like to see the water rate that we currently have go back to the way it was. And I can talk about it at the next meeting as to why I believe we should do that. Are you cut up?
Yes. Yes, I just wanted to clarify, you're talking about the penalty.
Yes. I want everything back to go, back to the status quo.
Got it.
Uh, number three, we have had a serious issue with homeless camping around our commercial facilities. I would like to see some kind of camping ordinance put into place. I don't know exactly what we can do, but I'm sure we can figure out something. I think you have a good idea of what I want. Come up with something good. Fourth, I have watched over the last couple months and watched Huron take in, rake in millions of dollars in grants and money from the state. And we are paying top dollar for our grant writers and our lobbyists, and we have got nothing that I know of so far. So I'd like them to both come to council and give us a presentation on what their accomplishments have been so far. We have put in thousands and thousands of dollars to these guys. And from what I have heard, we have got nothing from them. Third, or last, and I know this one's not gonna make anyone unhappy, but you can come up with a way to do this, and I know you can, is that City Hall needs to go back to five days a week. The reasons why we went to four days have been alleviated. We have given things to employees that originally we couldn't give them, which is one of the reasons why we went to four days a week. So now we need to go back to five.
I just want to specify on that last item, it'll initially start in closed session, since it's under employee negotiations.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. We're gonna go into closed session. We have one item. At Conference with Labor Negotiations, Government Code 54957.6, City Negotiators, Marissa and Mario, Employee Organization, Colanga Police Department, and General, Colanga Police Officers Association, and General Employees. Do we expect any announcements?
We do not.
Okay. That's all, and we are adjourned.